On the way home is proudly supported by Ellis Donn Community Builders. Community Builders has become a national leader in affordable housing. We've done it by developing innovative initiatives that can change the way Canada builds. Community Builders provides certainty as a service managing developments from concept to occupancy. We help with early stage feasibility, design development, funding and active project management to deliver communities Canadians can be proud of. From coast to coast to coast. So if you need more affordable housing faster, please visit communitybuilders ellaston.com to learn more. That's communitybuilders ellaston.com to learn more.
Welcome, welcome, welcome friends of the On The Way Home podcast. If you're new to the podcast, welcome. Thanks for listening. If you're returning, a returning listener, thanks so much for coming back. This podcast looks at the challenges and solutions to issues around housing homelessness, health and poverty. We have an incredible guest week after week, and I'm so grateful for all the people doing incredibly tough and lifesaving work across the country. I'm Michael Braithwaite from Blue Door, the organization that puts this podcast together. We're an organization that helps individuals with their housing, health and employment journeys moving forward. And we do that in Peel and York at Durham, which is just north of Toronto. Check us out at bluedoor.ca. We're doing all sorts of cool stuff, including construct our construction social enterprise, which is a very cool program that actually lifts people out of poverty, ends homelessness and puts people into awesome jobs that we desperately need them to do to build a house we desperately need. That is on our website and much, much more. Let's talk about today's guest. We need leaders. We need leaders that have a say and have the ear of others to make the real difference. We want to see in this housing challenge that we see in this homelessness crisis we're in. In the city of Ottawa, we have one of those leaders and they're a councillor. Ariel, Ariel Troster, who is, you know, when I reach out here and there and I say to people like, who should I be talking to about this stuff? And our frequent guest Carolyn Wisman said, you need to speak to Ariel Troster. She's a councillor that's a little different and really is passionate about this work. Has a background kind of in the sector and has done some cool stuff in Ottawa. So we talk about their journey into this work in Ottawa. What's happening in Ottawa? What does homelessness look like there? What are some of the cool things they're working on? What are some of the challenges? And really, Ariel's work on the inside and how they're looking to change it and move things forward. It's a fascinating conversation about a politician who has a ton of passion and who is not going to just let things lie. And is interested in solutions and is doing great work in the city of Ottawa. I love having these conversations. I think you'll love hearing them, hearing the conversation. Let's go to that conversation now. We ask the same question to everyone who joins the show because it's a very personal question. So there's no right or wrong. And that is, what does home mean to you?
Oh, that's a good question. For me, home means safety. It means family. It means acceptance. It means warmth. It means having a full belly and being able to sleep at night. It's something that I think everybody in this world should have.
Awesome. I love that. Something that, no offense, usually politicians are not succinct, but you are. So thank you for that. And let's talk about that. You were not born into this. This is not your first employment that you've ever had as a councillor. You've got an awesome career and we always want to learn a little more about our guests and your dedication to public service. So if you could take us along that journey, that would be awesome.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, I'm a pretty unlikely politician. I only ran because people asked me to. It's not something I ever necessarily thought I was going to do. I saw myself as an activist when I was very young. I went to journalism school, but I soon realized that really what I wanted to do was change the world. But it was a very broad concept. I didn't really know what that meant. I came up, I did student journalism and then I did a graduate diploma in community economic development. So I got really interested in community organizing. I did some community organizing in Montreal. And then my first job in Ottawa, I was working with Maude Barlow at the Council of Canadians. And this was in the early aughts, early to mid aughts, when, you know, groups of people were still protesting giant trade negotiations and, you know, talking about the impact on food and water and our planet. So very global focus, but also looking at saving public healthcare, keeping our water systems public. So, you know, I've been doing political jobs for a long time. After that, I worked for the Public Service Alliance of Canada, which is the biggest union of public sector workers here in Ottawa. And then after that, I went to work at the Federation of Canadian Municipalities where we were doing national advocacy to help cities get what they need. So, you know, I came into this job with a pretty broad perspective on ways to make change and also a pretty solid knowledge of the ways that cities are financed and the policy change that we need. But it's very different when you're getting those emails from your neighbors and from people down the street who want you to fix things. It's a very different perspective.
Yeah, you know, I would, I mean, I think your path is a great path. I mean, you, it was like, you had the knowledge, right? So many people, when we talk about especially municipal politics, where people that win and they're like, alright, so what do I do next? We've had, in York, we've had mayors that, that one was, I think, worked at a petticoat and then was mayor. And I had no idea how everything works. So.
You know, I mean, I don't, it's not a job you can really train for. I mean, I have a colleague who was a playwright and he's fantastic. So, I mean, I think you can come from any perspective. I definitely benefited from having a couple of decades of experience doing a bunch of different things. And also a lot of experience working in big organizations and having to seek consensus. And, you know, I've also done a lot of support and sponsorship for refugees and asylum seekers. So I feel like I, I came into the job with a bird's eye view of, you know, a bunch of different challenges and, and ways that we can work together. But, you know, this is, I mean, municipal government is the level of government closest to people's lives. Like I left a brunch on Sunday and somebody wanted to know about trees being cut down on their street. People cross the street while I'm picking up my dog's dog poop to ask me about sidewalk repairs. Like it's very, very, very local. It's, you're very accessible. People who know who you are, my ward is only six kilometers square. So like I go grocery shopping in the neighborhood, it's in the neighborhood, people talk to me. And the number one issue they want to talk about is homelessness. Homelessness, addiction and the visibility of a lot of these challenges that have really gone from what a lot of us refer to as like a slow burning crisis over the last 20, 30 years into something that's very clear and very present and very in people's faces. So I end up having conversations about this all the time, often unplanned in weird places like walking my dog.
I, you know, it's, it truly is public service. And for people who, you know, sometimes I get my backup when I see people picking on, you know, local politicians. I'm like, and I'm going to say this, when they say they're paid too much, I'm like, are you out of your mind? They're paid less than minimum wage because 24/7 and all those things, your privacy, all those different pieces that you talked about, you can't.
Yeah, it's the mental load too. Like I'm always thinking about it and I'm always walking through the neighborhood being like, oh, we should fix that. Oh, we should fix that. Yeah, absolutely. But I will say, we are very fortunate in Ottawa. We are a big enough city that councillors do make a full-time salary. Most city and town councillors across the country, they make a pittance. They're not paid full-time and they're usually doing another job on top of it. So like rural city councillors, even smaller cities, they are making peanuts. I would say we make a fair wage in Ottawa, but it is, you certainly do not do this job for the money.
No, I mean, recently it was in the news that, you know, Toronto council, they were looking at that. It's very hard to vote yourself a raise. And I believe Ottawa actually has a good system in place. So you don't like, because it's country, you're like, alright, we're in a crisis. We've got homelessness, we've got all these challenges and we're going to vote ourselves a raise. Now, this is like any other employer, every year you look at costs, you should be doing things like that. There's nothing wrong with that. And also, if you want to actually get, you know, some great people to it, you have to be competitive. You're right. And so year after year, if you don't do it, you find yourself at some point, it's like taxes. If you don't do tax raise, raise taxes for years, at some point someone asks you, then they are seen as like, what did you do? That was eight percent. Well, that's what you needed, right?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I think, I think we, I think we just need to be really upfront about what it costs to run a city. And yeah, I mean, I have colleagues who took very large pay cuts to be able to come and be elected to city council. They, some of them are senior executives in the public service. I mean, you know, especially if you're a single parent and you have to deal with a ton of childcare that would be required to do this job because we're out on evenings and weekends. I know there was at least one MPP in the Ontario legislature, I think it was Laura May Lindo. But she was a single parent and she decided not to run again because she, like she just couldn't make the dollars and cents work. So I agree with you both about taxes, also about fair pay. Although I am much more concerned about all of those councillors and all of those small communities that are really making nothing. When I go to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities conference, I ask, so how much do you make? And like, you'd be shocked, you know?
Well, so, so. Yeah, well, I'm going to be like, even in the town of Aurora, what happened is they hadn't put them up for years as part-time. But it really, even when they're part-time, they're full-time, right? Like they're doing a different job, but they're still on, going to events every night, doing that. And recently, like the big headline was a 40% increase of people, you know, headlines or, you know, and if you actually read into it, well, it's because they're trying to get them to the median of what that size of a town should be paying for. But everyone loses their mind because 40% when others are getting a three percent. And it's not that. You have to read past headlines, people. But, but yeah, you're right. In small towns, so who are you going to get? Who's going to step up? They usually say it's people are taking a huge pay cut and can afford to do so. But many people that are talented, that might be, you know, single parents just can't do it. I mean, I look provincially, it was 2008 was the last time they like, come on, I mean.
I know. And you know what happens is the conservative government, when they're in power, they just give everyone and their brother cabinet jobs. So they get a, they get a raise and then everybody else is making peanuts. I think provincial MPPs actually make less than Ottawa city councillors because they've had no raise since 2008. It's wild. It is wild. I think we just froze. Hello?
Little disruption there.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So, so I'm going to, I'm going to, I could talk about that forever. It's fascinating. I remember talking to Mayor Vaughan once and he was Mayor Mauricio Belavacqua. And he was saying that, you know, he was in federal politics and went to municipal and said, he just loved the levers. He felt like you were saying, like he actually could get stuff done. It's fast moving and it's real time. So you're doing incredible stuff and we've heard good things. Where, where does that passion come from? You know, like what, what drives it? Because obviously everything you've done is kind of round. There's some advocacy involved. It is like comforting parents, just something happening in life. Where, where's that passion come from?
Yeah. I mean, I always, you know, I came from a progressive Jewish family where we always talked about the, the Tikun Olam, which is the concept of repairing the world. My uncle was a very progressive rabbi. His daughter is a rabbi and a human rights activist. I just, you know, and my, and my mom was a lawyer and we grew up watching all of the Supreme Court decisions as they came down. And, you know, talked a lot about human rights. And I think it just has to do with my life experience, you know, I came out as queer 26 years ago. You know, the communities that I've hung out on, I know people who, many people have struggled with addiction. People, you know, who have engaged in sex work, people who were previously active drug users, some who still are. And, you know, I really believe in seeing the humanity in absolutely everyone. And that people with lived experience can bring a lot of value to any of these conversations. You know, and I've just learned through, you know, all of the movements that I've been part of, that we really need to listen and we need to focus on compassion and evidence-based solutions. And so, you know, I see part of my job as uplifting those solutions. And to, you know, I try to be quite principled and quite often people disagree with me in the neighborhood. And my attitude is that people have a right to understand my thinking, even if they don't agree with me. So I focus a lot on, on plain language communication. That's where my journalism background comes in and really engaging those conversations with people. And they're tough and I have them all the time. But, you know, if anything, sometimes the criticism I get is, oh, she's too compassionate, which is hilarious to me. I think you can be compassionate and still recognize that something's a problem. I think you can still be compassionate and say, well, that person's behavior is not so great. But I fundamentally believe in restorative justice. I fundamentally believe that every human has value. And I try to just take that into my work as a city councillor and to really keep that top of mind. And it really helps guide the kind of policy direction that I, that I move through.
Amazing. Thank you for that. We've touched a little bit what you're hearing from constituents around. Can you paint a picture for listeners not from the Ottawa area? What is, what is homelessness looking like in housing in Ottawa right now? What are you hearing from your constituents?
So first, the big picture is that our shelter system has never been so full. During COVID, we opened a number of what we called physical distancing sensor, physical distancing centers. Because at the time shelters needed to have some physical distance, which meant taking over several community centers, mostly in low income and racialized communities, as it turned out, to turn into temporary shelters. And now here we are five years later and we're trying to return those community centers to the community and open up space all over the city wherever we can find it. We've also seen a huge shift in the demographic of people experiencing homelessness where it used to be about 15 or 20% were newcomers. Now, system-wide, it's about 70% and our overflow shelters are almost entirely refugees and asylum seekers. So some folks may have heard about this debate about newcomer reception centers and where we put them in Ottawa. That's what we're trying to do is create a more humane solution. Now, in terms of the day-to-day in the neighborhood, I represent a center town, it, it can appear quite grim. You know, there's often small encampments popping up. There's a huge problem associated with loitering and public drug use because people don't have a place to go. There's also a highly mobile population of folks who live in shelters who are not allowed to stay in their rooms all day, who just kind of wander the city, you know? But, you know, the intersection of homelessness with the toxic drug crisis is really what's driving a lot of the concern in the community. Because people are seeing things they never used to see. They're finding needles places they never found them. They're finding people sleeping in, in the lobbies of their buildings, in their backyards, squished between the corner of buildings, like really inhumane situations. And also a ton of open drug use. And there's a lot of reasons for that, which we can talk about shortly. And so people are upset, you know, often they're upset that human beings are being treated poorly, but there's also a lot of compassion fatigue. I'm definitely getting a lot of make these people go away. You know, your, your neighborhood's going downhill and it, it's a tough conversation. I'm one of city council, I don't control the city budget. And I have to explain to them how we got to the place we are now, how every city across Canada is struggling, how abdication of responsibility by the federal and provincial government have left us here and how cities are basically begging for scraps. You know, and it's, people want easy, quick solutions. They want it to go away quickly. And these are human beings, you know, they can't just be moved. And when they are moved, they just go somewhere else. And so it's tough. I'm having this conversation all the time. I find that I'm doing a lot of educating and I, people don't always agree with me at the end of the conversation. But I'll tell you, it's an exhausting conversation to have over and over and over again. It really is.
I think this is very tough too. So people understand too. I mean, as a councillor, you're getting people who are saying, I want to take my kids to the park. I want to do this, I do that. Moderate people who are open to having conversations will say, I understand people need to save a place to live. But at the same time, I'm finding needles in the park. My kids can't go. They're a little scared, right? Like, and it's a very, it's a hard wire to walk. How, how do you do it? What's your, your response with this nonsense around a nonwithstanding clause? You know, as you said, you're just going to push one people from one spot to another. It's not a solution.
Yeah. I mean, we ended up in a situation, a situation where a lot of frontline workers and service providers are being blamed for creating a crisis that they're actually trying to solve. And part of this is because they've been starved of resources. So, you know, our homelessness and addiction sectors have been saying for years, the drugs are more toxic. Rents are going up, food is expensive, we're seeing more and more people, we need more resources. The government said no, the provincial government said no. You know, our one safe consumption site in my ward, which is now being closed by the provincial government, has been saying for years, more people are inhaling than smoking. The drugs are more toxic. We're dealing with more overdoses. It's causing chaos in the community. We need more money to do our reach and to do, to do work with those neighbors. They were not given that funding. And then the government comes in and says, you're the cause of the problem. We're shutting you down. So it's like, we're constantly fighting and begging for scraps and trying to prove ourselves. And it's really, really frustrating. And then we end up with discord because people are like, we don't want the service because it brings the people. When the people were always there, the service is trying to help, but they're just not given the resources they need to do the whole job, right? So people don't see the hundreds of lives that are saved in a safe consumption site or the hundreds and hundreds of hours of interactions between outreach workers, you know, that help, you know, encourage folks in an encampment and help find them housing. I mean, we're housing hundreds of people a year, but the problem is bigger than we have the resources to solve it with. So it is very tough. And then, you know, now it's really disappointing to see mayors, luckily not our mayor in Ottawa, but asking for, you know, basically a get out of jail free card from the constitution to enact the notwithstanding clause to dismantle encampments. And it's like, where do you think people are going to go? Like they don't just disappear, you know? And this whole conversation about mandatory treatment is absurd. I mean, first of all, that assumes that there's enough voluntary treatment for addiction across the country, which there is not. And, you know, you send someone to involuntary treatment, which is really a form of incarceration. And then they leave and what, go back to having no housing? It just, it makes no sense. This is, this is not going to solve anything. But I feel like people are reaching for what they think are easy solutions because the problem has gotten so out of control. And a lot of cities just don't have the resources to help to the degree that we want to.
You're right. It is very complex and we're okay. Tell us to do A and solve it. And Guy Ficelli, who was on the pod a little while back, was talking about that. He said, I went to treatment a number of times and fell back in because there's no housing attached to that, right? Afterwards, to support my journey of recovery. And you're right, there's, I mean, infinite, infinite amount of money. I understand, I was talking once with a very reasonable mayor who said, help me understand the camp piece. If they, you know, set up an encampment in this, you know, park right outside of city hall, that they could just, people can go anywhere. And, and he was open to conversations. We talked about, you know, the right to housing, what, you know, a proper way of working through it and creating housing and having conversations. And that it wasn't easy. One day, here's what you do. And he was like, oh, now I can, now that I can, that's people that are open to it. But I understand the pressures too, that councillors and, and I don't just get from the constituents to say, you're, and let's talk about the compassion fatigue you're talking about too. Are you, you're seeing more and more with people, they, they just, the empathy is going?
Oh, yeah. No, I mean, I think there's a general empathy fatigue in center town because people are just burned out. They're burned out by seeing chaos. They're burned out by public drug use. They're burned out by a high degree of unwellness and a feeling of a lack of safety. We've been trying to tackle that as a city. We just launched Ottawa's first non-police 24-hour day crisis response. It's a new program called Anchor and it's center town is the first area where it's been launched, where people can call 211 if they see someone displaying erratic behavior, perhaps having a mental health crisis, perhaps digging through garbage, doing something strange. But, you know, it's very interesting because we're also getting a lot of calls to 211 for people who are saying, you know, somebody's using drugs on the sidewalk in front of me. But that's not necessarily considered enough of a crisis for Anchor to respond. So that shows the need also for a lot more proactive outreach, which is something we're working really hard at. We have an application in with the province that we're this close to getting funded to get more outreach workers back on the street. And we also need more indoor low barrier places for people to go. If you're going to say, don't go there and don't sit there and don't set up your tent, where are they going to go? So that's something we're working really hard on. And also we have a win that's in the 2025 budget. I was able to get money allocated to build two modular public bathrooms in center town, which is also super important. We're literally finding human waste all over the city, especially downtown. So, you know, we know what the solutions are. We know, for example, with folks experiencing chronic homelessness, we have an organization in Ottawa, Options Housing. They have a 92% success rate in keeping formerly chronically homeless individuals housed after two years. That is astounding. We know the magic formula is housing plus supports. Supportive housing costs about $4,000 a month per person. That is a deal compared to incarceration or hospitalization. You know, we know what works. Our long-range financial plan for housing and homelessness aims to build 50 new supportive housing homes a year. But that depends on hundreds of million dollars of funding coming through from the province and the feds. So, you know, I, I always say my secret agenda is to radicalize people about municipal finance reform, but it's true. Cities have a really poor funding mechanism with property taxes. We will not solve homelessness with property taxes alone. The roots of the homelessness crisis in Canada started when the federal government stopped building public housing for 30 years. And here we are grasping at straws. And so, you know, if we had a cut of the income tax or the GST, if we had reliable transfers into cities to deal with these very large problems, we wouldn't have to go cap in hand and beg every time. Please province, please federal government, will you let us help you solve this problem that you created? It's, it's very frustrating. So, you know, you can imagine how many like sidewalk conversations I've had about this with people. I don't always get through. I don't want it to seem like the city's passing the buck. But this is a massive humanitarian crisis across the country. This is something that cities can't solve alone with the meager financial resources that we have. So, you know, and then there's a, there's a change in government, there's a change in philosophy. Suddenly funding gets yanked away, other programs get started, other ones shut down. You know, I was around during the nineties when so many of these services were downloaded onto cities, but the financial freedom was not downloaded onto cities. And here we are. So we're responsible for solving homelessness. And we, we barely have the resources to do much. So it's hard. It's very tough. And that's a tough thing to explain to people because when you're a city councillor and you're the person they know and you're the closest person to them, they're like, but why can't you fix it?
Yeah. And even for Ottawa, and I say like that, when the province did an allocation of new funds for homelessness prevention, you've got like a pittance compared to say Toronto for a city your size. You know, so certainly not helpful. Congratulations though on the washrooms. I got to tell you what makes my blood boil. So in downtown Toronto, if you walk around and you go into any Tim Hortons, nine out of 10 times the washrooms are out of order. Now they're not, and it's, it's a shot at, they don't want people experiencing homelessness to use the washroom. It just, there's no way they're all of order in that core where, you know, so it just drives me crazy.
You know, we, I had to fight because we put a porta potty in a park called Don Donald Park where a lot of unhoused individuals hang out. And there was a problem maintaining it because it was used so much and the, and the company that maintains it didn't want to maintain it anymore. I'm like, you have to maintain it or we're going to find poop in the park. Like it's, it's that serious. And, you know, I already have comments on my Instagram where I posted about the fact that we're getting public bathrooms. People going, oh, homeless people are just going to trash them. Well, you know, that's an awfully pessimistic view of the world. And the good news is we have funding for these modular self-cleaning units that have internal sensors and all sorts of cool stuff. And you can also hire street-involved people to help maintain the bathrooms and to help maintain social norms around the bathrooms. They're just, it's just too important. But also in Ottawa, you know, we have public bathrooms in some parks that are just permanently closed because we just don't fund the maintenance. It's absurd. It's absurd. So I've been yelling about this for two years. I'm glad we're getting somewhere on the public bathroom front. The basic human dignity, the basic public health. But, you know, what I, what I say is like, when people's needs are not cared for, they do what they have to do. If it means pooping in the park, you poop in the park. It's entirely undignified. If you don't have a place to go, you're going to hang out on the bench or on the sidewalk. Like, I don't know what people expect other human beings to do. Because you can't, you don't, you can't just erase them from public life. It's, you know, it's entirely unjust, but it's also just impractical, right? Like these are human beings who need a place to go.
Yes, exactly. Let's see the humans. I'm often moved by Leah Denbok, who takes pictures of people experiencing homelessness, tells their stories, these gorgeous pictures. She's a talented photographer, puts them in books, sells them, right? And, and puts proceeds back into supporting people. But one, she took of a man and his dog. And he said, thank you for taking that picture because it means I exist, right? And I think for so many people experiencing homelessness, we, I see it and it just blows my mind. And as you talk about compassion fatigue, you know, I remember being downtown in Toronto and someone face down on the sidewalk and just streams of people going around, not checking, not, and like, what is wrong with us that this is normal, right? That, now again, another gentleman ran up and shook the person, which is also what you don't do. But at least he cared enough to see if the person was breathing or, and we had a conversation. But, you know, you see that, you've got to see, and that to his point about the picture, this just proves my existence, which is, you know, sad, but, but, but true. What, listen, what, what do you think has to happen? What has to change? You're, you hit it 100% bad policy, like we're 30 years behind, but we can't wait 30 years to catch up. What has to change in the next few years for real impact to happen?
I think it could have a real impact if we had, you know, enough, there's, they estimate there's about 700 to 1,000 people who are chronically homeless in Ottawa. So those are folks who typically spend more than six months a year in shelter. A lot of those folks, because they're quite street entrenched, do require supportive housing. Not all of them, but some of them do. If we really look to tackle chronic homelessness and have enough supportive housing, you know, at different levels of support for the people who need it, I think that would make such a significant impact. First of all, in the quality of life in our city, because these are the folks that are hanging out because they've nowhere to do, to go. So these are the folks who might be engaged in social disorder. These are the people whose addictions are unaddressed because they don't have a roof over their head. If we can really ambitiously target, target chronic homelessness. And honestly, that could be through rent supplements and support workers. It doesn't, you know, you don't have to build from scratch. You know, there's an incredible organization in Ottawa called Operation Come Home. They work to end youth homelessness. They have a block leasing program, a pilot, which is extremely cool. I think they heard, they hold about 25 or 30 leases. And then they sublet to their clientele and they provide supports. But by leasing them as a block, they're holding on to those rents and they're, you know, they're, they're preventing that speculation in the market. They're creating a good relationship with the landlord. They figure once they can hold 300 leases, they can empty the youth shelters. Like we need to be focusing on two things, diversion for people entering the system. So, you know, so Operation Come Home works with kids who are leaving foster care, for example, and ensures that they get decent housing and support so they can get a good start in life. And then we need to work to end chronic homelessness. Now, these other pieces, like the huge influx of migrants that we have because of global conflict, we're also working on creating a special, special stream of newcomer reception centers in Ottawa where folks who are asylum seekers and refugees and don't have another place can go, to go, can be in a shelter that's designed for them, that's a one-stop shop, that's really dedicated to rapid rehousing and connecting them with the resources we need. There's a lot of. There's a lot of great stuff we have in Hopper in Ottawa, but as I said, it's just about the funding. Like if the feds and the province would accelerate that funding and say, we're going to give you enough money tomorrow to give rent supplements and supports to every chronically homeless person in that city. That, that would just change the channel, right? Like that would be an immediate impact on our day-to-day quality of life for everyone, right? Business owners, kids going to school and for those human beings, because they would finally have what they need, right? So, you know, you know, either we need like a massive financial investment to just say, go end this, fix it, because we know how. Or we need a more sustainable funding source, be it a cut of the income taxes, the GST, so that we can figure this out on our own and have reliable funding to deal with this massive humanitarian crisis. But I have to tell you, even though I hear all the time from residents that are upset and have compassion fatigue, we're actually doing so much better in Ottawa than other communities where they do have entire city parks taken over by massive encampments. Some of them are looking at sanctioned encampment sites. Cause they don't have anything better to offer people. It's, it's a really tough slog right now when it comes to homelessness in Canada. And so I do sometimes try to remind residents that we've actually done so much more than so many other jurisdictions, but it never feels like it's enough.
No, I mean, listen, if there's one person experiencing homelessness, it's not enough, right? So we have to get, but you're doing better. And I think there's incredible organizations across Ottawa doing great work. We, we've had many of them on this podcast who've talked to Matthew, Matthew House and, and others doing great work. Shepherds of Good Hope, etc. When they incorporate like medical into like brilliant, right? So, so your average person, you talk to a lot of people when they say, what can I do? Like what would your advice, someone's like, how can I be part of the solution? I see that. How can I help? What do you tell them?
Yeah. I mean, I tell them a lot of things. First of all, you can donate to any of these organizations. You can also come. It's our city budget process right now. You can come and present a committee to talk about the need for real solutions. And you can join with us in advocating to other levels of government. So that's something I really want to focus on in the winter, once the city budget is passed, to give people a path towards advocacy. I'm always thinking, how can we channel people's anger into useful action? So first of all, they feel like they're winning something and they're getting something and they're helping. And also so it can help us solve the problem together. And also, you know, talk to your neighbors. If you experience this kind of backlash, talk to them, you know, explain your perspective. Talk about what we know the evidence-based solutions to be. Really, I think we just need to humanize these stories. Also, I mean, I heard Mark Horabath's wonderful keynote at the Alliance and Homelessness Conference. He has the Invisible People YouTube channel where he really humanizes the stories of folks experiencing homelessness. I think that's really important. And then also interestingly, there's a session led by VC Housing. They tested communications messaging about homelessness and they found that two sort of streams of messaging were almost equally as effective. One was the compassionate argument. And one was the economic argument about how much cheaper it is to actually fix homelessness than it is to allow it to continue. And so sometimes when I'm going head to head with someone who just doesn't agree with my sort of ideological perspective, show them the data. You know, it's like, even if you don't think we should be investing in this, it's costing us more not to. So the compassionate solution is also the fiscally responsible solution. And that often gets a lot more conservative people on board because they get it, right?
I was just about to say, when we talk to the conservative government about, we leave with that, we leave with the economics and then go, depending on who we're talking to, but that's what we leave with. This is an investment. It's actually going to save you dollars. It's tough with prevention pieces too. You mentioned diversion, etc. Because divergence is immediate, but some of the prevention pieces are, it's not going to save it for eight, 10 years. However, it's the, like you, we always use the, I do an actual, I had to explain homelessness to seven-year-olds once and I'm like, this is going to be impossible. So I use this, this bowl of water and say, this is homelessness in Canada. And I give them spoons, they're outreach workers, they're going to get them to the services, which are cups. And so they're doing this, they're doing this. And every time they get close to emptying the bowl a little bit, I pour a little bit more in. And like, I tell them a fact about what's happened and what's increased homelessness. So people could, and it actually works with all ages. It's great. Say until you stop where I'm pouring in, until you turn off that tap, you can't really end. You got to prevent, but it's sometimes costly upfront. And unfortunately with cycles of government, sometimes it's, what do we, you know, we got four years to do something here. Tell me what I can do today. That is not the case with you. I am so, it gives me, and I think many of our listeners will have great hope that we have amazing individuals like you advocating for our most vulnerable in positions where you're doing great work and it shows in Ottawa. And we are grateful for that. And we are grateful for your time today. If people want to get in touch with you or find out more about the work you're doing or that council's doing, where can they go?
Sure. They can go to my website, which is ArielTroster.com. That's A-R-I-E-L-T-R-O-S-T-E-R. I send out a newsletter every two weeks. I'm also very active on social media on Instagram, just joined Blue Sky. It's getting very big. Facebook, LinkedIn. I try to post little explainer videos. No more than a minute or ninety seconds when, when something big is happening or when I'm hearing a lot from the community. You know, and there's also a lot of other councillors that do something similar. I think the best thing you can do in your own community is get on your own city councillor's email list to keep abreast of what's going on, to figure out what meetings you need to watch and where you need to make a difference. And there's going to be federal and provincial elections coming soon too. And it's really important that all of your federal and provincial candidates hear how much of a priority it is for you and for your community to help end homelessness.
Thank you for that. Yeah, there's a lot of fear, I think, just in the sector too, about upcoming changes with elections, that what does that mean? You know, one step forward, two back. But the only way you can ever change that is by exercising your right to vote and, you know, becoming part of that solution, being an advocate.
Yeah, I mean, I've often heard that voting is a form of harm reduction and you should elect the person that you think will be your best upon it, right? Like elect the person that you think that you can have a conversation with, even if you don't agree with them 100%, but you think that they'll listen. I think that's really, really important because democracy doesn't end when you vote. You know, that's the beginning. That's the beginning. And then you keep pushing.
Beginning of a conversation, you want to be able to have a conversation with someone who is willing. Sage advice. Thank you so much for all you do. Thank you for your time today and looking forward to see what you do in the future.
Well, thank you. It was so nice talking with you. Have a great day.
You too.